Meeting for July 14th underway. The flag salute.
Prohibition is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Afghanistan. To the nation from other god, and to this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cler.
Here.
Councilmember Callings.
Here.
Councilmember Staff Clet.
Here.
Councilmember Globman.
Here.
Mayor Redmond.
Here. All right, we have no special presentations or announcements, so we'll move into public comment. If anybody in the public wishes to speak on anything not on today's agenda, this is your chance. Just name and address.
I have some copies I would share about here.
Yeah, that's fine. You can start there, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Mayor, and member of the City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Mike Bradley, and I serve on the Board of Directors for the Mount Shasta Fire Protection District. I'm here today of deep respect of our partnership between the Fire Protection District and the City of Mount Shasta. Our joint staffing agreement built to support seven dedicated fire personnel is a vital component of public safety for both jurisdictions. We are concerned about the city's current decision not to fill a recently vacated firefighter position. While we understand that budget constraints are a reality for all of us, this part, this position is part of a shared commitment, and its loss directly affects our collective ability to respond to emergencies, protect lives, and maintain adequate staffing during critical incidents. We are particularly concerned about the directive for the fire chief to withhold nighttime responses unless deemed absolutely necessary. This introduces an unacceptable risk to public safety, especially in a region like ours, where emergencies, whether medical, fire-related, or otherwise, do not keep regular hours. We appreciate the conversations we've had with the city manager and the finance director on May 9th of this year. They were informative, and we value the transparency and open dialogue. However, those conversations did not result in any solutions. Our board would like to schedule a joint meeting between the City Council and our district board to explore more options. Tonight, I respectfully urge the City, the council to reconsider the funding strategy and work with us to maintain full staffing of the fire department. We are open to exploring compromises, whether phased hiring, creative cost sharing, or grant opportunities, among other things, that uphold the spirit of our agreement and the safety of our shared communities. We all understand the gravity of wildfires, medical emergencies, and structure fires in our area. A fully staffed, fully supported fire department is not a luxury. It's an essential public service. Public safety is the most fundamental responsibility of local government, and any reductions to emergency response capabilities compromise that obligation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, move it on to council and staff comments. Todd will give you the floor.
You know, when I, in the past, we've talked about seeing what we can do about getting access or potentially control of a well that's at the right elevation on one Shasta property, formerly Crystal Geyser. And we went through protracted negotiations with the owner of that facility about a year ago, and negotiations fell apart. They did, however, let us have access to the proposed tank site to allow us, under grant, to complete environmental, and we've done that, at least a draft form. And at that point, we kind of let it sit just because we weren't coming to any resolution. We were getting too many attorneys involved and just burning attorney fees. So, reached out to the owners, and I figured that we'd end up talking once they determine that it would be in their best interest to annex into the city, because under city zoning, they would be allowed the density to maximize their return on investment on that site. And that indeed is the case. They want to work on annexing into the city with us. And in addition, they have granted us a new easement, which our city attorney is drafting right now to allow for, um, an easement for utilities and for the pipeline. And they have talked about, the big hang-up before was they wanted to reserve some water on the very off-chance that somebody wanted into the facility that's there that needed to use raw water for some type of industrial process. They don't have any expectations. They know their deed restricted in terms of bottling. But I, we may have a solution in that there is a well that they could keep that would not be part of what we need to round out the city's supply and also to serve that property. And we would end up being the municipal water supplier for it. And they, in turn, would give us that land and that well. So that's, it seems that these negotiations have been revived, and we're moving forward on that. At a previous council meeting, we talked about hiring a professional, you know, statistical research firm and a firm that works on not only political campaigns, but on helping communities pass difficult tax measures. And we've been talking about a, trying to float a new sales tax measure to support public safety. A lot of folks have seen that, you know, they have a, a survey that's been out, and the, the company is analyzing those results. And there's an email that I sent out to everybody in the community about the need. And I'm happy we've gotten a lot of responses, and I've talked to a lot of folks in the community. And given the level of responses that I've received to date, we've set up a town hall for, after Labor Day, I believe it's September 14th, and with the potential for a second in October. So, to ensure that we answer all of the community's questions and they understand where, why the city is in the position that we are, and how critical it is that, like our gentleman mentioned during public comment, fire and police services are, are of a critical need here in the community. The, finally, and I won't drag this out, we've all talked about the landing and how that's been working its way through the Surplus Land Act. It has been posted as part, part of an RFP process. Now, developers have 60 days to respond to the RFP that's gone out. We've talked about K-2 development. They've, they've responded. They haven't submitted anything yet, but they plan to. Pensino Holdings has also said they're interested. There, there are also two other concerns that have expressed an interest in. Jeff Mitchum Plender and I spoke to them on Friday. They want to do some affordable workforce, and they've talked about some, some mix of uses. And so, they're gonna, they're still chewing on this, probably going to have some more questions. But we've got at least four interested parties, so we'll see what comes out of this process. That's what I've got.
Thank you. Chief, anything? No? Any of the department heads want to chime in? No? All right. Council? All right, we'll close that and move on to committee updates if there's anything to report on that.
The DAC met, and Tom Heselden gave a presentation on Castle Daylighting. And the DAC, it's the first time they've seen that presentation. They're very excited about the, you know, that option, and they took it upon themselves to write a letter of support, and all of them have signed it for submission with any, you know, grant applications that we, we'll end up submitting. The Sierra Nevada Nature Conservancy is, is one potential option that we're looking at right now, and will be a, you know, got a pretty good shot, at least if I'm part of this. And essentially, that took up the majority of that meeting.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. City manager recommends approval of the following consent agenda items. All resolutions and ordinances on this agenda, or added here too, shall be introduced or adopted as applicable by title only, and the full reading thereof is hereby waived. A, approval of minutes for June 23rd, 2025, regular meeting. B, approval of dispersments, accounts payable for June 23rd, 25, and July 2nd of 2025, total gross payroll and taxes for the period ending of June 26th, 2025. C, Police Department Monthly Report. D, Approval of Snow Removal Ordinance, Second Reading. E, Rescind Ordinance, CCR 25-05, to address use of phrase in perpetuity, Chamber Resolution. And F, Dissolution of Snow Removal Ad-Hoc Committee. And point of order, should I just not say anything on this since the snow removal thing is on here that I have to abstain from? Instead of pulling it off separate? Just not vote on this?
Yeah, I see what he's saying.
Or do we have to pull it off separate for the four of them to vote on since I can't?
Yeah, and, and Jeffrey would have to read, read that one, yeah.
Okay.
No, he, just F has to be, F has to be offered by Jeffrey.
I just want to make sure we get the point of order right since I can't vote on that.
And, and I'll, I'll move to approve with a, with a CCO number, CCO-25- does anyone know?
05.
05?
05.
05 for number D. Anyway, I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through E, with D being CCO-25-05.
Wait, I think we, I think we were talking about the two separate things.
No, does, what is?
D is the snow ordinance. I thought you were talking about E when you said the CCR.
Yeah, no, the, what is the CCO for the? Yeah, what is the CCO for the snow removal? Yeah. Okay, but what's the CCO number?
Oh, my bad, 3.
Okay, so, once again, moves to approve consent agenda items A through E, with D being CCO dash. No, F is going to be redone.
I think the mayor has to abstain from D and F if it's both for snow removal.
Okay, so, um, let's, let's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that we do a rereading of the consent agenda
and have the mayor pro tem read it, and that the mayor himself just.
Just, I don't have to vote on it?
Just, yeah, just pass on it entirely.
Go ahead, Jeffrey.
And you now know it's CCO-25-03.
In the consent agenda, the city manager recommends the approval of the following consent agenda items. All resolutions and ordinances on this agenda and added here too shall be introduced or adopted as applicable by title only, and the full reading thereof is hereby waived. A is approval of amendments June 23rd, 2025, regular meeting. B is approval of dispersments, accounts payable June 23rd, 25, and July 2nd, 2025, for total gross payroll and taxes for the period ending in June 26th, 2019, uh, 2025. C is the Police Department Monthly Report. D is Approval of the Snow Removal Ordinance, that's the second reading, and that is CCO-25-03. And rescinding ordinance, CCR-25-05, to address use of the phrase in perpetuity, Chamber Resolution. And F, Dissolution of Snow Removal Ad-Hoc Committee.
All right, I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through F by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries and.
Abstained, abstained.
And with the mayor abstaining.
Abstained. Thank you. Okay, cool. There we go. Got through that. All right. All right, moving on to number eight, discussion on the development impact fees, water and wastewater connection fees. And Melissa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I think back in April, an ad hoc committee to address fees was established. And John Redmond and Casey Globman have been joining us every other week or so for a couple months now. And so, as part of that process, we are looking at the different types of fees that the city can charge, and some, some of the fees are set up by studies. And so, we were looking at the development impact fee, the wastewater fee, and the water fees. And the fees have been being discounted for quite some time, per resolution from the City Council at that time. So, there's, there's more information in here about that. But as we were discussing it at the ad hoc committee, we wanted to get this addressed sooner rather than later. The other fees, we're still working on the procedures for those, and we're meeting with staff and doing time studies and things. So, for this one in particular, the recommendation was to change from a discounted rate currently in existence of 75% to a reduced discount rate of 50% for 25, 26 fiscal year, change their discount rate to 25% for fiscal year 26, 27, and then be at the full fee by 27, 28, based on the time study that was previously done. The recommendation would also be to, to work towards getting a new time study done for those fees. And I think that's laid out here. The last impact fee study was done in 2009. The last wastewater fee was done in 2017 with an update in 2020. And the water utility fee rate study was done in 2022. So, the current fees are set through 26, 27, and that's, of course, the fees for the water, you know, the usage that they pay now. So, this study would, would cover all of that. So, the recommendation from the ad hoc committee is to change the reduced amount of fee for this fiscal year to be 50% versus 75.
And if I could add some kind of higher level context, you know, we've had a, a number of meetings talking about our budget issues and reduce sales tax and flat TOT. And one way to help us right-size the budget is to actually charge the cost that it provides, staff, for materials, and time for the services that we provide, paid for by the folks that we're providing those services for. And so, that's the intent behind this.
Any questions for anybody?
I do.
Go ahead.
Melissa, it's been a long time since I've looked at what makes up the fees. In general, is it fair to say that there's a portion of the fee that covers, and in particular, I'm looking at the, um, water and sewer hookup fees? A portion of that covers time relative to staff time involved in processing plans, et cetera, and making sure everything's, going over all those hookups. But is, is a portion of it, and I thought the majority of the portion of that, some, an allocation of funds relative to the debt we have on the sewer plant, the wastewater plant, and that that's, goes into that enterprise fund which is paying off all those fees? It's both of those things? Is, is that correct?
Um, it's, you know, so, there's a couple things. And you guys have been around for a long time on this. But, you know, we had these fees originally. They were cut by 75% with the intent that it would spur development because our fees would be less expensive. And yes, because we've had these reductions and why we're trying to get them back to normal. By law, we are not able to charge any more than it, than it costs for us to provide those services. So, essentially, the city has been subsidizing, subsidizing the services that we aren't capturing.
So, in particular, for the wastewater and the water connection, we have a separate fund currently set up for that. And I, I haven't read the studies, and so, and maybe Jeff can answer this better. But those fees are currently just part of the fund balance that is accruing in those funds, in the enterprise funds. The rate study, from what I would understand, would have captured all of that, although I don't know that the, the current water, wastewater one, how much information they would have had to be able to do the rates with, you know, we hadn't been operating the plant at that point.
Right.
So, I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Well, it's, it's good as I need it for right now. The next question is, you were gonna reduce the, reduce the discount from 75%, which is, has been going on for several years, five, five sort of years, and it is, go down to 50% in the 25, 26 year, which we're in. So, is this, like, effective immediately?
That, that was the recommendation of the committee, yes.
Okay. Well, it's, uh, this is just question time, so I'll hold the rest of it.
Oh, you're fine.
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, this isn't set up as a resolution. Are we just giving staff direction? You're gonna come back with an ordinance?
No, we're just giving an update.
Yes, yeah. So, this is an update. Okay.
Well, the, I think, yes. The, the committee, it's the committee's recommendation to the City Council to determine.
So, then you want direction to come back with an ordinance relating these numbers?
A resolution, yeah.
Well, it'd be an ordinance, right?
The, the current fee discount is set by resolution. So, the, the, the actual fees are set by the studies, and then the discount is set by the resolutions. So, I think we would just need to revise a resolution.
And so, and so, what do you mean by studies? You mean the, the fees are paying for water and sewer? Okay, those are rates, those are rate studies. It's a 218 process, rate study fees. And they're laid out, and you, and to change those, we'd have to do another 218, I think.
That's, yes. So, this is just for the discounting of the connection fees. This isn't anything to do with the actual enterprise fund revenue on a day, on a monthly basis.
So, it's, it's a, it's a couple things. It's, you know, A, obviously, it's a connection fee. It is for, the way John Kenny would phrase it, it's for the privilege of being able to hook into the municipal water supply. And obviously, following that down the line is for treatment, as well as staff time for, for the connections.
To the chair.
It's my understanding that this was put into place to attract buildings so that it was an incentive to build in Mount Shasta. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And, and I believe, you know, at the ad hoc committee, we talked quite a bit about that and, and what the impact would potentially be and what the impact has been. And so, after those discussions, the committee, this was the recommendation that we came up with, was gradual increase of the discount of those fees. But also that it, that we should likely look at doing a rate study for all of those, you know, is when we can afford to do that.
More questions? All right, we'll open up to public comment. If anybody wants to give their three minutes on this. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Bring it back. Jeffrey, you had a, you got a diatribe ready?
As one of the earlier speakers brought up about, we have revenue constraints that are, that are taking real bites into services that we offer. are taking real bites into services that we offer our constituents, and this is a portion of revenue and potential revenue from development and impact fees, water and There are two, well, one more kind of background, which is, one thing that's relatively, not relatively, very stable on a steady growth path are property taxes relative to hotel taxes and sales tax. Those go up and down all the time. Property taxes have been steady and going up. So encouraging property tax growth while not big numbers, it just keeps going up, and it's a central part of our revenue profile as a city, which is why we were trying to encourage it through a discount. And my headline is, I'm going to recommend that, my perspective would be, do not cancel this discount for two more years. And here's why. There's two things that motivate people. One is a reduced level of discount, and the other one is taking it away. You take away a discount, all of a sudden, there's a different incentive, and it's the same incentive but from a different perspective. And the monetary impact of a slight increase in development and the property tax gains that we would have there relative to the, assuming the same level, roughly the same level of, same level of development, the increase in fees that we would connect, I'll go with the property tax all day long, which doesn't mean I want to have the discount at 75% forever. I would suggest we go back to 50, and then to 25, and then to zero, but I wouldn't start on, I would give developers a 23-month window to go, well, yeah, we were thinking about it, if we're gonna do that, that's a significant number to them, we better, we better get on this. And that's the headline of my rationale for, yeah, do the, do the same thing but push it back to, I think, what would be 27, 28.
I understand the logic of that. If I can just interject here, I think, and that may be completely sound logic, and that's up to council decide, but I think one of the things that we should look at, all I've got is anecdotal information, so I don't have statistics in front of me, but a lot of you have been on council for a while, and I guess my question for you is, did you see a marked increase in development after the cut in these development fees?
No, we did not. It was 2018, John, when this came, when we...
19.
What?
I think it was 19.
19? Well, we all...
Yeah, was that...
You're talking about building buildings?
Pardon me?
Building of buildings?
Yeah, homes, anything residential, and the answer is no, we didn't.
Wasn't much...
The idea of fixing up the buildings as well, just...
Fixing up the buildings, I think there was a bit, I think there was a bit of...
But there's...
But was it because of this discount, or did the discount just make it cheaper to do?
And there was an event in 2020 that kind of slowed things down.
There was?
To the chair. My point of view would align with Jeffrey's. I think we allow the developers some time to get with it and get their stuff in and get building, and then they have a heads up of this is getting decreased.
It's an incentive to get the projects done. Thinking about doing a project here in Mount Shasta, better do it within 24 months. Go and get started.
I mean, obviously, I was part of this ad hoc committee that recommended this in the first place. So I totally understand the logic of pushing it back by a little bit, kind of letting, and I think that was actually the idea behind the graduated increase, rather than doing it all at once anyway. So if we were to do that, which I'm not opposed to, I would actually, I would argue that we go with the 26, 27, and say you have a year. I mean, it's been since 2019 that this was implemented in the first place, if it didn't spur a bunch of development. It's hard to imagine there's like a ton of people sitting out there, sitting on a bunch, but even if it is a few, great, but I feel like the ability to, if the people are serious about a development happening, a year versus two years, I mean, I think if you're gonna get something going, you're probably gonna get it going in a year, at least to the point of getting to the point of getting these permits and fees in.
To the chair? Oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, I have, I am in a construction background, so a year does seem like enough time in a normal scheme of things, but there's usually a two-year backlog at least. So it would give time to reorganize, restaff, so I see your point, but I do think it would, for the bigger developers especially, it would take longer than a year.
I don't know if I can just point out that from the numbers that are here in the summary, the change would be about $7,800. So I don't know how many of these, and Jeff could speak to that, we do in a year, but it would, from what I can see, it would impact that development by about $7,800. So I mean, that's, you know, doesn't seem significant, but if we start to build that into our funds that we can do future projects with, it's, you know, starts sooner rather than later, but...
I didn't understand your math.
So right now, we're giving them a 75% discount, and if we were...
And in dollars, what is that?
It is, from the current fees that are listed here, that's a $23,000, $24,000 discount.
Right, $24,000 discount.
Right. And so if you divide that over three years, the first year impact would be about $8,000. So...
Why would you divide it over three years?
Because we're proposing raising it 25% over the next three years. So something that would happen in the current fiscal year would only go up by $7,800.
So $7,800 per period is what you're, thank you, and to that point, to the chair, may I? Casey, I would still recommend that we don't start this, but we get rid of the 50%, get rid of the 50%, go from 75% down to a 25% discount in two years. So it's...
They end up in the same spot.
You end up at the same spot, but you get rid of that first discount, so it becomes more of an incentive to go, look, we got a 23-month planning horizon, and then there's gonna be a significant jump of $14,000 or $15,000 per water and/or wastewater. And...
So I understand the logic of that, but if we're talking about a large development, are they being held back by a $7,800 fee? I mean, if we're talking about multimillion dollar development here?
We're not talking...
You said large development, I mean...
The one that comes to mind is the Moss property behind, on Kenneth, you know, wherever that is, behind Kenneth Way. That has, I'm gonna, I have, I'm gonna screw up the numbers here, but let's say 100 pieces of land, that would be 100 separate hookups. That would be very advantageous to them to do it within the two-year window.
You know, this, this is maybe interjecting too much, but with the, if I recall correctly with the Moss property, with the sagging infrastructure on site and the need to replace that before they can really actually market it, I think that's at least two or three years out before they actually could develop anything out there, but just FYI.
More realistically, there are duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes that are looking at this, but Jeff, if a quadplex applies for a sewer and water hookup fee, is it four sewer and water hookup fees? Yeah. So it isn't 7,000, it's, or 8,000, it's 32,000, and in the parlance of some of the people I've heard speak about this, that's real money. And those types of developments are more likely the kinds of things as we fill in holes around Mount Shasta. There's certainly the big one out at Moss, and I think it's more like 42, but still 42, that's a large number. And if you get rid of the 25% from 75 down to 50, just put it off two years or 23 months and go from 75 down to 25, I think you end up with a, as strong and urging as I think we can offer to, hey, now's the time, and property tax is our stable, our stabilist revenue source. That's why I'm commenting at all on this.
If I may, to the chair, if I may just add a nuance to that, the inducements to growth, to development, particularly infill growth, have a great deal, in my experience, a great deal more to do with the municipal code provisions for by right permission to build, sort of right of property ownership. You all bit that off last year, as you recall, with the implementation and adoption of the housing ordinance, housing element, and follow-up ordinance amendments to allow multifamily housing by right. So that clarity in code is kind of inducement number one. Number two is procedural clarity and certainty around the review process, so time to shovel in dirt. Shorter we can make that, that's kind of secondary inducement. Fees like this do add up, they're significant for sure, but for the most part, they tend to be second or third tier considerations. And thirdly, or fourthly, I guess, I would rather, I'd like to point out that potentially, during the course of your review of this material coming from staff in the future, you'll likely have a choice to provide inducements for affordable and/or missing middle income housing through your action. So you could say, for example, if you're providing income levels at X, for example, we will discount your fees further, as opposed to full market rate pays the full fee. So that's a nuance and a split of the logic here that is coming forward.
Thank you, Jeff, that's helpful, and you want to speak?
Yeah, so I'm glad Jeff gave the rundown on what, from his expert opinion, makes a difference in getting developments started and finished in a timely manner, well, has to do with timeliness. I think the bigger thing here, a big thing that's going to be coming up, is that interest rates will probably be forced down. I'm hearing this macro stuff all the time, and so I'm torn between the Clor collings delay proposal and the...
Recommendation.
C and C.
Well, it's over here, we're here.
Redman, let's get this going, proposal. I'm just thinking, if interest rates really do go down, if we do head to zero like something crazy, which they are in Europe and some other places, it could be a lot of incentive, including this, to get things done now, so...
Can I add something?
I'm unsure, I'm leaning your way, though.
No, tell it to her.
Sorry, I didn't mean to, and, you know, and this may be here and or there, and again, this is a very specific situation, and a lot of this development is grant-funded. Mountain Town Homes, they've been issued their development fees. Their water connection fee at the discounted rate, 70, or 25%, was $78,000. Their sewer connection fee was $97,000.
That's what it does in aggregate, correct?
Yes, for the 25 units, but if you, if that was four times that amount, or, you know, we would be in better shape. But then it becomes, you know, well, like the mom and pop developments where you've got, you know, six units that you're building, that it's a real burden. Anyway, whatever, it's just food for thought.
Casey?
Yeah, to John's point here, if, and I kind of actually agree with this, that if development is being stalled at the moment, I think it's more likely uncertainty in the overall macro trends and people waiting to see if interest rates go down, they are significantly higher than they have been. So if they do drop, either because the market dictates it or because somebody forces someone else's hand, sure, and they do get dropped really quickly, and that spurs a bunch of development, whatever fees that we set are not, are gonna be paltry compared to the amount of savings that they're gonna be able to do by taking advantage of super-low interest rates, and so if we, if we don't change these now, theoretically, we're just, if they're gonna build, if people are gonna build anyway, we're just gonna lose out on that revenue to forces that are larger than our, that are out of our control anyway. Go ahead.
Point well made. However, there are certain people here on this board that know people who are in the construction business, as previously stated, and directly, do you think the fees make that much of a difference? I mean, I think they do. We had people in here screaming about the fees.
Personally, I think they do, I think it would create that question mark of, should we build in Mount Shasta versus somewhere else?
That's offering the answer.
Right. So, yes, from our perspective, I think it makes a difference. But then that begs a question, do I need to recuse myself because it would make a difference?
Well, I'm not allowed to vote on snowplowing, you know, so...
Well, this isn't a vote, so...
No, we're just taking recommendations here, some guidelines to work on in our next meeting at the end of the month, so...
So what this comes down to is, I don't think there's any disagreement about the structure of the fee increase, it's the timing, it's really timing.
No, we're all for the increase, it's just how much and when, so...
So there's no, there's really no debate about the increase, the step, the step increase process, it's a matter of timing.
One thing we didn't, one thing that we didn't talk about, we just talked about going, in two years, going to a 25% reduction from the 75 now, what if we do nothing for the 25, 26, and then just go up 25% in the 26, 27, or, sorry, go to 50% reduction in 26, 27? So we're basically just pushing this timeline out a little bit, like you all are suggesting, and that way, if larger macroeconomic trends do push interest rates significantly lower, and there's a natural boom in development anyway, we capture some of that, but we're theoretically incentivizing people to still build in a timely manner because there is, we're still going to raise it, but we're kind of splitting the middle ground there.
I think that's where we're going. It kind of sounds like what you guys are saying anyways, so...
Well, push it back here. Well, take the same thing, but push it back.
Well, but still have a grant and an increase on next year in 26, 27, because you were saying no increase until 27, 28, right?
Bump back and down and go on.
We're compromising.
Finding some common ground here, yeah.
So I'm gonna move to say we maintain the fee structure increase, but delay it one full year, okay? All right, so that's gonna be the, so that's my motion for direction to staff to formalize this in a form of a resolution and/or ordinance, whatever is appropriate. Okay, so I need a second and all.
Second.
Are we actually doing a motion? Is that part of this? I thought it was just receiving the information.
Is it a motion for the recommendation?
To give direction to staff.
Okay.
And we changed the recommendation, their recommendations, by a year.
Of course, we need a vote, though.
Okay, so you moved, we got a second from Clur. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Opposed? None, all right. We'll work with that at the end of July. All right, moving on to number nine, the budget adjustment of the 2025, 26 fiscal year. We'll keep rolling, Melissa having the floor.
Thank you. So back in April, we, well, I did a budget review, I believe, in December or January was the first budget review that I did for you all, and at that point, we looked, mostly looked at revenue, and I had done some projections for the different revenues that we collect, and sales tax in particular, because the sales tax had been so down from what was budgeted. So that was the first budget review that I did, and then in April, we came back and did another budget review where you gave us guidance to come in with a balanced budget. So the team got together, the department heads reviewed their budgets in detail, and we... in detail, and we came back with not a balanced budget, but a very close-to-balanced budget by a fifty-four thousand dollar deficit. And as was mentioned earlier, that did come with a reduction of two FTE, one in the police department and one in the fire department. And so this process would be formalizing that, basically the budget authority that you provided in June of twenty-four by adopting the two-year budget that included the twenty-five, twenty-six appropriation. So the budget adjustment that we're, that is before you is a reduction of the allocation to appropriate the funds by two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-dollar reduction of expenses. And that is, of course, a variety of different places. Some places were increased, but mostly they were reductions.
Any questions?
Does this take in, I'm guessing not, does this take into account the items that we discussed at the finance committee meeting last week? No?
No. No, this was just a formal process of adopting what was the recommendation when we met the last time we did the budget review. You can't formally adjust a budget until it's in existence.
There's several big chunk things as we look at these budgets. We had an adopted budget of two-point-three million from sales. We're now budgeting one-point-five million in sales. Do we, do you have any idea where, a rough estimate of where we're going to end up this year that ended on July first?
So my projection is, for twenty-five, twenty-six is flat from where I projected us to be in twenty-four, twenty-five. In looking at, since I did the presentation, the first presentation that I did, we are trending at about ninety-five percent of what my projection was. Most months were down, were lower than what I had projected, except April. Last month, the sales tax was at one-forty, and our average had been right around one-twenty, one-twenty-two. So given that, you know, I wouldn't increase my projection too much. That was at a hundred, that was at a hundred-and-twenty percent of my projection, but over the last five months, it's been generally at ninety-five percent. So my recommendation, my expectation is that we will be right around one-point-five million for sales tax. So over the next two months, we have to collect two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand. That's a hundred-and-thirty, we've been at a hundred-and-thirty-three in March and a hundred-and-thirty-nine in April. So if that continues, then
So one-point-five for this year looks pretty good, and you're just projecting flat one-point-five for next year?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. May I do a few more?
Absolutely. As long as I have answers.
And this might be city manager, might be more in your world, the Apex Tech budget, which is significantly larger than what we had adopted a couple of years back. Can you just give us the headline on what, why it's jumped up as much as it has?
It's increasing price of software, the addition of servers, and, you know, I'd have to look at the rest, but I would say that they have made some minor reductions, and we're going to be able to save some additional money by losing two servers once we have finished transferring data from an old police department system to a new system. And, you know, in my conversations with them, they're, they're holding their rates flat from this year, and then we're going to have to reassess next year. But, you know, but we lose those two servers, we've lost some licenses that we've determined that we don't need, and, you know, and consolidated those. And we've moved towards, you know, a cloud services, we're moving towards a cloud system service that is less expensive than relying solely on Amazon Web Services.
Thank you. And back to Melissa, you and city manager, went through extensive contract, employee salary contracts several months back, and overtime was a primary function. Reducing overtime expenditures was a primary focus on doing that. And the overtime budgeted for next year for fire and police is relatively low.
It's, it's, you know, it is, it's drastically lower, and I, you know, as long as we're shooting towards that end, I'm a little concerned that we aren't going to hit those two marks. But the ask was for a reduction in overtime by seventy-five percent.
Right.
And our folks have been doing a pretty good job of getting us at that. They've done, they've worked really hard.
Right, that's my understanding. With the exception of dispatch, who is budgeted for over double what everybody else is. And I'm just wondering, can somebody explain why they're being budgeted for a hundred-and-fifty percent more than police and firearm?
So that was a, that projection has not changed from the last time that we met. And at that point, we were still in negotiations. And at the rate that we were spending then, this actually was a reduction for them. Given where we're at now, and where we finalized the negotiations, we are changing the way that we staff. I think that that is overbudgeted, and that, you know, we probably could reduce that down to about twenty-five thousand, so cut it about in half. I have significant concerns about where we budgeted overtime, as I know others do as well. And I think that I'm going to be looking for direction about if we get to a point where we are overspending that overtime authority, do you want us to come back and ask for more authority for the overtime? But where's that money going to come from? Are we going to reduce another expenditure? Because you want a balanced budget. And I've been sending out every pay period to all of the department heads where they're at with their overtime. We had just started a new fiscal year, and I will be showing what they have left in their overtime amount for the, from the budget. What we've been looking at over the last several pay periods is where they're at, and if I was to annualize that, where would they be? Well, now I can say, well, here's where you are against your budget, because we're into the new fiscal year now. And I can tell you that if we had annualized the amount of overtime for fire alone, last pay period, we would need a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars worth of overtime, which is where they were before we made the cuts. The other part of that, and this is just from my experiences in the past, rather than pay that level of overtime and have potentially that burnout, maybe you staff another position. Now, we had to cut a position there, or, you know, that's where we landed as a leadership team. So, and that was what was brought back as our recommendation. So that, that number, the fifty thousand for dispatch is one thing, but if you look at the overtime picture as a global, we have, we probably have some problems there that we're going to need to come back pretty quickly to resolve.
Anybody else? All right, we'll open this up to public comment. If anybody wants to give their three minutes on this. Seeing everybody jump at once, we'll close public comment, bring it back. Any more concerns? Any other questions? Motion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jeff, you start.
Please.
You want a motion?
Can I, can I talk first?
Yeah.
This is arguably the most important thing that we do. This is the nuts and bolts of the finances of keeping a city, which is just a business in some senses, of having it be solvent. Three years ago, we had an excess cash reserve of two-point-seven million dollars, actually a little more than that. As of today, it's about a little over eight-hundred-thousand. We've managed, want to lose one-point-nine million dollars in three years. And we're headed, and that plane is still headed that direction. Pardon the metaphor. We're at the place where we don't have the luxury to continue on that glide path. We can't. We simply can't. They're, the solutions are increase revenue. We are cutting expenses. The solution is increase revenue. We have three sources: sales, hotel, and property. That's our three sources of revenue. We are actively involved in trying to increase our sales tax revenue. Letters have gone out, that will be a discussion here soon. But in the meantime, we don't have the luxury of a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars in one department overtime on an annualized basis, or losing another five or six-hundred-thousand dollars if we don't make cuts, the proposed cuts, and getting down to becoming virtually insolvent. No, no excess money. Have a hiccup, you become insolvent. And it's, it's a real thing. The state will step in and take over the city. Now, I'm not trying to be too overly dramatic. I don't think that's going to happen, because we have other levers and things we can do. But largely, in the short term, it's called cut expenses. This, it's not complicated. It's revenues and expenses. We got three, we're working on building those up. But otherwise, you have to cut expenses to change the glide path run. And that's just the way it is. We're not micromanagers telling the city manager, or the finance director, or the planner, or any of the department heads, this is what you need to do. We just come back and go, as far as, I'm not trying to speak for the whole board here, but I can certainly speak for myself, we need to have a balanced budget. We need to stop hemorrhaging six, seven hundred thousand dollars a year. We cannot keep doing it.
Well, there's also, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. So that's all we, speaking personally, that's all I request. And thank you for coming back with one. And that's all I'll say about that for now.
If I can add to this. So I think everybody understands where you're coming from completely. I think that the reality is that a lot of us are, you know, are wondering, you know, if these projected reserves were even real in the first place. And, you know, we have been working now really hard to see where we can, you know, cut services and streamline our services. You know, and our partners over at the fire district, you know, part of this, and it's going to be a great opportunity to meet council and the district, you know, and they can't, you know, and they know this, they can't wave a magic wand. But part of our agreement with the district also is that they pay the same rate that the city does for our fire personnel, and that's, you know, they're woefully under. But, you know, that would require passing a tax measure in the county. That's, that's, you know, that's, you can't snap your fingers and make that happen. It's going to take some time. But there were, I guess to round this out, we're doing our best to, with this shock that what we thought we had, we don't.
Motion?
Yeah. All right. So I'll move to approve a budget adjustment of two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars, negative, meaning reduce the overall adjusted budget down to six million, two-hundred-and-forty-thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-three dollars, as requested by staff.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All opposed? None? All right. Moving on to number ten, waste management agreement.
Yes. So we, meaning Melissa, and Jody, and I, and Diana's here from waste management, we've all, and her team, we've all been working together for quite a bit of time to, you know, to talk about the new contract, and ensure that changes in billing, and everything from the cards we're rolling out, and ensuring the public is informed. It's been a long process. What we have in front of us is a new service agreement, starting in, on July first of this year, so it's retroactive for these weeks through December of 2029. And essentially, we didn't have to go through a 218 process, because the cost of providing the services are material unchanged. And in certain circumstances, the cost of providing that services, those services from some parties will actually go down. You know, it's, there's a lot of information in this contract. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read it. The city, out of this process, sees a four percent franchise fee. And, you know, it's, it's been reviewed by our councils. And it looks like, do I need to give a couple comments you'd like to add to this, or just to answer questions?
I'm here to answer any questions that council should have.
Okay.
But that was a pretty good summary.
All right, we'll open that up if anybody has any. No questions?
No, not questions, comment.
Okay. All right. Well, seeing as nobody has any questions right now, we'll open this up real quick to public comment. Seeing as there is no public comment, we'll bring it back.
I'm somewhat surprised. I actually understand what you're going to do. Your communication has been relatively clear. It's a pleasant surprise. I don't have expectations. I've never had service from you all, so I didn't really have a thought one way or the other. But in case this is somewhat confusing, this is a compliment.
Well, thank you very much. It also goes to city staff, whom we've been working with over the last several months to, to make this resolution, or I should say reinstated agreement. So we've worked really well together over the last several months, monthly calls, and just trying to stay on top of everything, and make, make as easy as a transition as possible for rate payers and services. So wonderful. I'm glad to hear that things are going well and successfully.
To the chair. Just as an aside, at the latest finance committee meeting, Melissa discovered and brought up that the franchise fee from this does, in fact, belong in the general fund and hasn't been going there. So that is a fun caveat.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Did I find the right page?
Yeah, I move to approve the changes and therefore the contract with Waste Management for the, before us for, what is, three years?
Yeah, we did not make any changes to the existing term. We kept the term the same. So it would go until 2029, correct?
Till the current, changes, so I move to approve the changes in the current contract as listed here in this agenda item.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to number 11, the parking district pass, the first reading. Chief Gibson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At the June 9th meeting, I brought forward the parking district pass was presented. Council requested some changes to the ordinances that was presented, one of those being that the issue dates start at the fiscal year, so July 1st of every year would be the pass. The pro rating language was eliminated. Both of those are in the new ordinance, so you can see it's been shortened down. There was some discussion with council that the fee should be in the ordinance, but staff had determined that the best and most efficient way would be put it into our fee schedule that we're working on so that it can be done by ordinance with everything else can be justified and lawfully defended as our fee going forward there. So you'll see there's no fee in here, this is simply just the parking pass and I'd be happy to just point out that this would not, this doesn't exempt people from parking during snow removal or any of this and it's only valid from those times of 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, except holidays and so.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, is there a limit to the number of passes that a given business is allowed to get for their employees or for the employees to purchase, just because like different businesses have significantly different numbers of employees downtown?
There's no limit.
Yeah, they just have to prove to be an employee.
If you're an employee or a business and you can show, prove that you have to show that you work at a business or you own the business, then you get the pass and then if they want to park there, they can or if they want to take advantage.
You gotta pay the fee.
Huh? Gotta pay the fee if they want it and if they don't, we have all the nice new parking lots that we have downtown for people to park in.
Okay, we'll open this up to public comment. Seeing that there is none, we'll bring it back. Do we have a motion?
You want to move?
Move to pass an ordinance of the city council, or ordinance CCO-25-TBD, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Mount Shasta adding Section 10.44.081, parking district pass to Section 10.44, parking prohibited or restricted of the Mount Shasta municipal code.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None? All right, moving on to number 12. Resolution adopting transportation project list to be funded under SB 1. And Ken Kelly on the floor.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor. As you're aware, every year we get a chunk of gas tax money from the state. A portion of that goes into the road maintenance and rehabilitation account, the RMRA account. This year, '25, '26, we're projected to get about $85,000. One of the stipulations that comes along with that chunk of money is that we pass a resolution listing all the proposed projects that we look to spend that money on. Actually, this year, we're carrying over the projects from '24, '25. The majority of it is for chip sealing. We typically do that through the county road crews. They were not able to assist us last year because of budget, other priorities, and lack of staff.
Broken equipment.
And broken equipment. This year, they've, they haven't guaranteed, but given us a solid promise, they'll be able to help us with our chip sealing. So this resolution, the majority of it is spelling out where the work will be. A lot of it is chip sealing. We also left in Mount Shasta Boulevard overlay, just in case we, you know, get a chunk of money and we can tack that one on as well. I fully expect we'll get to the chip seal. The overlay might be wishful thinking, but it's on the list.
Dare to dream. Okay. Any questions? All right, we'll open it up to public comment. All right, 12 for 12 on zero. Bring it back. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve Resolution CCR-25-06. 06?
Resolution 20.
25-20? Okay. A resolution of the city council of the city of Mount Shasta adopting a list of projects for fiscal year 2025, '26 to be funded by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
Second.
All right, wait a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None? Okay. Good job. There you go, Ken. All right, so moving on to any outside meetings, Collier, anybody? No? Okay. And moving on to any future agenda items that we'll be wanting to, oh, sorry, so we have the master fee schedule review coming up and then a public hearing and the revocation of a business license possibly. Anybody want to add anything?
I want to talk about that business license.
Was that the load?
Yeah, I may have to recuse myself on that, but at this point... They've paid up, we've got... They what? They've paid. How much? They're the last quarter that they owed and our attorney fees, they're about due for the next quarter and, you know... What about the older mine fire year? We've been paid for all that and each time, what prompted it was, you know, was...
You're at zero.
Well...
They owe April, May, and June. In July, by July 30, they'll need to have paid April, May, and June.
Yes.
Zero, yes.
So hopefully they don't continue that.
But they've been made aware and the brokers that specialize in selling hotel hospitality projects, I called and let them know what's going on and sent, you know, our filings and they say they are unable to sell that property unless they're solvent and up to date with paying their fees, so they now know that.
And just a reminder, starting this month, the TOT will be moving to monthly, so we're in the middle of July now, that will also be due then in August.
Okay.
I'm just curious, Melissa, as you've reached out to citizens, what's been the response in asking folks to move towards that schedule?
I've got, I think we sent 80 some or 100 emails and I think I got five responses. They weren't...
Minimal.
Pretty minimal, yeah. And it was mostly around that they now have to do a little more work every month. So, you know, it wasn't any, it didn't seem significant.
Well, I highly recommend the monthly paying of that to help keep your costs down compared to quarterly that way.
I was going to recommend that we either create an ad hoc committee or we have council meet with the fire protection district folks and get to work on that if we could have, if someone wants to second that.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to see all five of us there for that, actually, less ad hoc than all five of us meeting with them.
Okay. Before we adjourn, I forgot one thing. This is Jeff Mitchum's last council meeting in his last week and I just wanted to thank him for his expertise and his ability to deal with the public and to provide excellent customer service and you're going to be missed.
If we take his car keys, can he still stay with us? Anything else to add to the future agenda items from anybody? No? All right, on that note, we will adjourn this meeting. See you in two weeks.